I'd like to call to order the June 13th, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the agenda for the June 13th, 2023 regular board meeting.
Is there any, or is there a second? The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I would like to make a, make a motion to amend the agenda to postpone the discussion of item 9.1, Policy BC, until the August 2023 Board Retreat. Is there a second?
Second.
I will ask if there's any discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
So, we have had policies brought before the Board several times to be able to discuss. And this is one of the policies that was recommended by the IG to address some of the concerns about Board behavior, the dysfunction of the Board, as well as if you look at some of the most recent comments made in our survey, it's a major concern of our Board, I mean, of our community as well as our Board. And I do not think that putting it off until August, that's the beginning of the school year. Let's start off the school year with something positive and some other policies that we can address. This is something that we, we've addressed administration, we've addressed operations, we've addressed the finances in the IG commit, in the IG report. This is the one thing that has been important for the Board, several Board members, as well as for the community. And so I think it is important for us, even if there's wording that you don't agree with, we've bought policies before the Board before with people who have made suggestions, they've been posted on the screen, and we all have gone through and picked out, crossed out, remove this and remove that. I got your message, you talked to me today, you said you felt the wording was subjective. Well, this is an opportunity for us as a Board, because to be honest, that wording was pulled from other districts across this state that are, that have probably experienced some of the same things that we've experienced and needed to address it. It's not anything personal. We can, we can, you know, say, hey, every Board member, you know, pull something out or make a suggestion, but I do not think that table in that discussion until August is appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Scott.
Mrs. Washington, thank you for that comment. That enlightened me on a few things, but I think I would like to have it postponed now that you've shared that, because I think we really need to take a deeper dive into what we want to do with it. And on August 3rd, I think it's August 3rd or August 4th, we actually have a school Board retreat, and I think that would be an awesome time for us to sit back and not have to rush the process. Just my personal opinion, I believe that if we do it tonight, it may take a long time and people are not going to be fully invested in what they do or say. I think this is really very important, especially if it's part of the IG report, that we really take our time to make the changes. However, if the Board moves forward with the discussion tonight, I'm okay with that as well.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Nash.
A couple things. One, I agree with Ms. Washington. We've had several policies that we have put off in the past, and the Board has acquiesced to your request. However, it was the will of the Board, we did vote on it to put it on this agenda. I think even if we just, you know, start the discussion tonight, that is, that is a place that we can do. But if it is the will of the Board, and it has, because we voted to have this on here, there is always room to make changes. Again, Board relationships, Board dysfunction is a huge situation that we would like to fix. And a lot of it, you know, we are new here, we're reminded of that often, but it is like a tug-of-war between the past and the present. And addressing a lot of this is needed, not also to mention, but I will, the fact that even in the Post and Courier, your, your last comment was Board relations is still an issue. So, that being said, I do, will not be voting to postpone this discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. McFadden, did you?
Yes, I was just gonna say that I wanna be leery, because I have requested a slate of policies to be put on the Board Retreat as well, so that would just be adding extra policies. Either way, I haven't made a decision, but I just wanna let you guys know that there is already a lot of policies on, for the Board Retreat that I've requested.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I'd just like to say that with this being an item that came from the IG report, I'd like for us to keep everything within this calendar year. And not only that, I'd hate for it to be misconstrued that we've prioritized many of the items that were focused on our district staff and waited to discuss items that were about the Board until last. And our committee discussed Board conduct at all of our committee meetings, and we want our constituents to know that we did prioritize this, we have communicated this, this is a priority for us, we didn't ignore these items at all. And this is a no-action item. This is just for us to communicate the things that we like, the things that we don't like. So the items that were suggested, if, if there are items that you don't like, now's the time to communicate it. When we have the workshop, this is, that is when we can have multiple drafts brought forward, and then we can have our first reading, which will limit the time of our actual Board meetings, so that we will only have an official Board meeting one time, voting on a policy. And so we'll have a workshop with the first reading, and then a Board meeting with the second reading, which is something that I know many Board members have suggested in the past. So this is an opportunity to voice the things we like, voice the things we don't like, and it doesn't have to be anything negative or anything that has to go on and on and on, just to voice the things that we like and dislike about the item.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. And my, the reason why I've asked for it too, or made the motion was, first of all, I agree with all of my colleagues that the decorum needs to be addressed for the member, member Board, Board Member Conduct. I think it's going to be a long, extensive conversation, and a very healthy conversation that would be better suited for a Board workshop. I've got concerns that we'll hear about later today, should the Board move forward with this, that I think would be better addressed in a workshop, but it will be the will of the Board. Any additional conversation? So we're going to initially vote on the secondary motion to postpone this vote until, or excuse me, postpone the discussion until the August retreat. Pardon me?
No, I was just saying I want to.
Okay, the motion is correct up on the Board, so Board members, do we need to do a hand vote for this? And the vote is one yes, six no, the motion fails. So we're back to our original motion to approve the agenda. Board, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. The motion is correct. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult education program, student appeals, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and the receipt of legal advice related to personnel contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Dr. Scott to go into the exec, to go into executive session for the purpose of student admission requests into adult education programs, student appeals, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and the receipt of legal advice related to personnel contracts. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is the motion correct?
Correct.
It's correct. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. The Board will now convene an executive session. May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move to adjourn executive session at 6:05 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp to adjourn executive session at 6:05 and reconvene in our general Board meeting. It's been seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? There's no dis, no discussion. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Moving on to item 4.1, the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Porter.
Today, the inspirational moment is brought to us by the teachers, coaches, and admin of Center for Inquiry. We all know how precious time is for our educators, and this team has inspired many this year with their creativity and autonomy given to these professionals to plan and collaborate as they create the best inquiry-based learning experiences for their students. I love how they also involve everyone in their community. Ladies and gents, I present to you the fabulous team from Center for Inquiry.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Porter invited me to share the story of the professional development structure that we call Curricular Conversation, that's been the source of encouragement and inspiration for our community at CFI, in hopes of encouraging you and inspiring you in kind. H.L. Mencken wrote, "For it is mutual trust, even more than mutual interest, that holds associations together." The story of Curricular Conversations is one of creating and sustaining mutual trust. Curricular Conversations are a professional development structure that served as the cornerstone of our faculty's learning since the inception of the school. During Curricular Conversations, teachers discuss professional readings paired with video examples from master teachers. Together in those meetings, we draw from the professional literature, research, and teaching examples to appreciate, analyze, critique, and inquire into possibilities for growing ourselves and our practices as educators. Mutual trust matters. We rely on that trust among the faculty to support the difficult work of personal reflection and growth, and we make and protect space for the things that matter. To carve out that space, we had to extend our hand in trust to our CFI family, asking volunteers, just like Mrs. Porter talked about, to take time during their lunch breaks to join our CFI support staff for lunch with the children. We trusted them, and they showed up in a big way. Parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and cousins showed up every Thursday this year to help out at lunch, and as a result, CFI's leadership team was able to protect time for our teachers to learn. Trust is the connective tissue and the muscle that structure and power Curricular Conversations. We trust, the trust we cultivate remains healthy through use, just like muscles do. This isn't passive or blind trust either. We actively trust one another as professionals in these conversations, spurring each other to take ownership of our own learning goals, to celebrate the growth of our students together, and hold each other accountable for constantly seeking better for ourselves and our kids. Curricular Conversations are a perfect example of the power and potential of intentionally, thoughtfully, and responsibly acting in deep trust of one another, ourselves, our students, and our families. If we expect teachers to fully and brightly shine as professionals, we must all act and continue acting in service of that reality that we seek. When we do this work of trusting on purpose, we hold ourselves and one another accountable to that trust. We get glimpses of full expressions of humanity, possibility, and becoming. Our students learn more, our families are more connected, our teachers are more fulfilled, and our community grows more when we extend our hands in trust. So I'm grateful for your kind attention today and careful listening, as I've shared, but it might be even more important for you to hear from some of our teachers.
At our school, we're fortunate enough to do curriculum conversations, and for me as an educator, it makes all the difference, being able to come together with my colleagues to not only think alongside, but to think up with what we think is best for our children and how we're all striving to make sure that our learning environments are not only supportive of, of us as practitioners, but also are helping to move our children forward, because that's what we're here for. The topics range from anything from what we're doing with our curriculum, or what we're needing as educators, and the places that we're having to be most vulnerable. And I haven't seen that done anywhere else, and it's always, always, always been one of my favorite things that we do.
Curricular Conversations has definitely improved me as a teacher, or helped me to grow as a teacher, because as we talk through Curricular Conversations, I'm able to just make sure that my beliefs line up with my practices, and I'm able to leave Curricular Conversation inspired about what I'm gonna do next with my kids in the classroom. And so I feel like it really does help me continue to keep evolving and growing as a teacher.
I believe Curricular Conversations has made me a more reflective practitioner, because it's a safe space for me to think about what's best for my kids, try things in my classroom, and when they work, I can celebrate, and when they don't, we can go back to the drawing board together and see what I need to do for them.
As we close, we are the Center for Inquiry after all, so I'd like to leave you with a question or two to ponder. What might happen if each of us extended our hands in trust to someone close tonight? What could we grow in ourselves and one another if we actively and intentionally cultivated mutual trust in our communities? Thank you. Stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that inspirational moment. We are now moving on to item 5, the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Madam Chair. Mrs. Washington.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda for June 13th, 2023 regular Board meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash to approve the agenda, or excuse me, the consent agenda for the June 13th, 2023 Board meeting. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. And the vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. Moving on to public participation. Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that each person is limited to three minutes and that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to Policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to the staff, to a staff member for response at a later time. This evening, our first speaker is Irina Stevens.
When does my time start? Oh, okay. My name is Irina, and I'm the parent of students at Richland II Schools. As brought to your attention in my June 2nd email, I am saddened to see the pictograms of male, female, half-male, half-female on the single-occupant locker room signage at Elwright Middle School. I have come across on the one sign during a school event and have not surveyed the facilities to see if there's any more. This sign, first of all, excludes those individuals who identify as neither male nor female, and the list of gender identities is lengthy. How far are you going to take the pictograms to include all students? And secondly, this sign excludes those individuals of faith who strongly believe that gender ideology is a sin and is an abomination to God and their faith. I appreciate the single-occupant locker room, however, gender ideological pictograms on signage are not necessary, not required by law, and do not represent all key stakeholders. I completely agree with Will Anderson, Chief Operations Officer, that there are many different beliefs and personal opinions and preferences. My question is, why was the decision made for the signage to conform to the beliefs of the deviant minority? The views of gender ideology are not accepted by all key stakeholders, and the signage could be considered as a form of bullying students into acceptance of gender ideological ideas. Why create a controversial environment and subject discerners to intense pressure? Why not have signage that is inclusive, neutral, and non-offensive, and identifies the room for what it is, handicapped, accessible, single-occupant locker room? Will Anderson diligently replied to my inquiry last night.
Point of order. Our speakers are not supposed to name individuals that work in Richland II when they're doing public speaking.
If you, if you could refer to him as the COO.
Okay.
Thank you.
I apologize. Thank you. I was, by the CEO diligently replied to me my inquiry last night in providing various federal and state laws, South Carolina School Facilities Planning and Construction Guide, as well as Richland II School District II policies that were used in making this recommendation, and I thank you for that. I have reviewed those and did not see a single citation that specifies that male, female, half-male, half-female pictograms are required for single-occupant locker room signage. The only symbol that is required by law for this room identification is the international symbol of accessibility per the ADA. The many laws and codes that were quoted and stated provide a broad latitude for interpretation. I'd like to escalate the issue and to, to the superintendent, and I would like to appeal this matter to you, the Honorable Board. Based on the best interest and respect for all students, not discriminating on the basis of gender ideological or religious beliefs, and in fairness to all individuals, I urge you to replace the existing signage for single-occupant locker room, and further to formulate and adopt a policy to rein in the interpretation of laws, guides, and policies for signage at Richland II Schools, to be truly neutral and all-inclusive, and to omit the pictograms of single-occupant locker room signage except for the required international symbol of accessibility. I urge you to establish...
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. I, I did thank you very much. And if you want to send that to us, your time has gone over. I did allot you a couple of seconds, because the clock did start before. But please, if you would like to, send us your statement as well. Email it to us.
I definitely will.
Thank you so much for coming to speak.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gus Philpott.
Thank you, members of the Board and Superintendent. My name is Gus Philpott. I prepared remarks tonight before I came, which I am not going to use, because I watched the 5:30 opening of tonight's meeting, when it took you 12 minutes to get to executive session. You've probably heard that actions speak louder than words. Did you listen to yourselves tonight? When you get home, please watch the live stream recording of tonight's opening. This whole thing about Board conduct can be resolved with being civil, and being respectful, and being polite. That's it. That's all you have to do. Now, listen to tonight's opening of the, on the live stream session. The IG's report was about the old Board. However, the stakeholders' input report was about the new Board. The consultant from the search firm, Superintendent Search Firm, was here a couple of weeks ago, and she gingerly approached that you were probably not going to like what you were gonna hear. I hope you read it and read about the dysfunction. That's about this Board. The dysfunction was bad enough about the old Board, but this is about the new Board. I'm often asked, is this Board better than the last Board? And my answer is usually, well, it's different, but it's not better. The point that was raised tonight during Ms. Stevens' remarks, that an individual who works for the school district cannot be named, is incorrect. When you read the policy, the policy prohibits expressions of complaint about anyone associated with the school district. So if I want to mention somebody, and you may remember that a couple of years ago, there was a, a man who tried to compliment the principal and teachers at Round Top Elementary, and he was stopped by the then-chair. Incorrectly, he was stopped. He can compliment a teacher, he just can't complain about a teacher, staff member, employee, or anyone else associated with the Board. So please read the policy and, and when I, hear what the speaker has to say. If you find that a speaker is complaining about an employee of the Board, then a point of order would be correct. But I'm sorry to say that tonight's point was not correct. I hope that you'll really begin learning, you haven't learned it yet, but learn how to operate as a Board, a friendly Board, and watch tonight's opening on live stream and take it to heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Our next speaker is Dallin Searle.
Hello, my name is Dallin Searle. I would like to take a moment, look around this room. What do you see? I see leaders, educators, mentors, administrators, officers, students, et cetera, who are all passionate and share one common goal, giving people the chance to grow and learn productively, effectively, and safely through inspiration, quality, and motivation. With each person here taking part in their role, it provides the peak condition for change. For Richland II, for Richland II School District is different for most, because the eagerness and pride, which is undoubtedly shown by students, teachers, leaders, and Board members. I've experienced many different forms of educational systems throughout my life, from charter schools, public school, homeschool, technical colleges, dual enrollment, online in-person, and online colleges/university. Throughout each of these systems arose one common problem that inevitably seemed to surface, which is the declining passion and joy for learning. I'm not here to complain, for I do not find the joy in it, and I do not find the purpose. I'm here to do what I can to help with the solution and to share my perspective. So this time, look around the room, but not just here. Look around the community, look around our schools, and look around our current standings in education. One of the key elements of safe and passionate learning is revealed, the environment. In every school, there's a reoccurring social environment that seems to instantly take place, that shapes the kids based on the perception of others. We as kids and teenagers feel we must fit in this environment, or in other words, be out of place, which is called peer pressure. As we know, peer pressures lead to addiction, fights, and prideful standings. It is winning away the lives and potential of so many students who are just clawing for a chance to show who they really are. Now, I don't believe we have to say it this way. I believe, and I'm sure you... I believe, and I'm sure you do too, that everyone has the potential to become something great, but they need help. This is where you are needed. Kids today need to be inspired, they need to be motivated, they need a creative environment. They need you. For a quote that I live by from Albert Einstein is, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we use to create them." For what I've seen, this school board has a great potential to make a lasting and meaningful change in the lives of many, but you must do it together. It is ultimately your choice to make a stand and help to start to creating a real inspiring environment. As we trust God and each other, we can make a difference. I have great hope and respect for this district and the people working tirelessly to provide the needed resources, time, and dedication to move forward. May God bless you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Searle. And our last speaker is Crystal Adams.
I signed up today. Am I not on this?
I do not have you. Tell me your name.
Katie Gage.
Katie?
Gage.
Gage?
I signed up yesterday.
Did you, you signed up online?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Pardon me? Yes. The, the will of the board is agree with her to talk, the majority of the board, please come and speak.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Good evening. In April, I addressed the board with concerns about the Pride event being held at Blythewood High School. Many parents shared my concerns and contacted the district. After I spoke, I had parents contact me, saying that they agreed but were afraid to speak up publicly for fear of retribution. I heard from teachers who said that they wished they could speak up but were afraid of losing their jobs. How sad that our own community members feel that they can't exercise their First Amendment rights for fear of repercussion. Despite all of the phone calls and emails from parents, the event was allowed to proceed, and the school cited protection of the event under Title VI. There is no mention in Title VI giving schools the right to push sexual identity politics onto minors, nor are Pride events included under the definitions of programs or activities under Section 4A of Title VI. In short, the school used Title VI as a smokescreen to hold this event, ignoring the many communications from concerned parents. What's more, these type of events and on-campus discussions violate parental rights and consent laws. Remember, we are talking about underage minors, so let's be clear, this is ideological grooming. The whole premise of Pride Month is sexual preference. Why does the district feel the need to insert themselves in the sexual preferences of its students? Public schools should not be promoting politicized views and sexual orientation and gender identity to their students, but that is exactly what's happening in this district. Just take a look at the Pride display in the lobby, go take a walk through the library across the hall, not one display about Memorial Day, D-Day, Independence Day, or any of the other patriotic values that unite us as Americans. It's clear that politicized education and activism are being pushed in classrooms all around this district in the name of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social, emotional learning. These initiatives are not inclusive, but rather exclusive, to any student, faculty member, or parent who holds conservative Judeo-Christian values and refuses to subscribe to the neoliberal worldview. The district is weaponizing empathy to manipulate students into this worldview. What they want is for everyone to conform and be quiet. Just this past week, Richland 2 tweeted a picture of the foyer's Pride display. Schools aren't meant to be affirming spaces. Discussions about sexual preference do not belong on our campuses. Those conversations are reserved for parents and legal guardians. The district does not have the right to take that from parents, nor to have these discussions with our underage youth. Whatever the personal views of faculty members, they cannot go over the heads of parents and undermine the values parents choose to teach in their home. And we as parents have every right to seek accountability, choice, and transparency in our children's education. Government officials must be held responsible for this. The district needs to dissolve the DEI department and dismiss the activists who seek to supplant parental and student rights. Schools aren't a forum for activism. I strongly encourage, encourage more parents to have the courage to speak up. If we truly are a district of inclusion, then every voice should be heard. True diversity is diversity of thought and free competition of ideas. Diversity is not our strength. Our strength is what unites us across our, I, bleh, it's what unites us across our diversity. This is what America was built on and what our founding fathers understood when they penned our Constitution. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Mrs. Gage. Thank you, Mrs. Gage. Moving on to item seven. Thank you to all those that came tonight to speak in public participation. Item seven, voting on executive session items. Item 7.1, student admission request into the adult education program. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students numbers one through three.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott to admit students one through three into the adult education program. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote.
And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. Item 7.2, student appeals.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move to deny the appeal for student numbers, student, that's numbers one through three.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Porter to deny the appeals for students one, two, and three. Is there any discussion? While I have, my discussion is I have no conflict of interest for the appearance of impropriety. I will need to recuse my vote for each of these students, one through three. Board members, please vote. And the vote is six yes, one abstention. The motion carries. Item 7.3, employment recommendations and certified releases. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I'd like to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote. The motion carries. Item 7.4, any action as appropriate and necessary based on personnel contracts discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp.
I move that the board affirm the decision of the interim superintendent regarding the separation of an employee from the district.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, we'll wait for the motion to, uh, post. Mr. Trapp, can you confirm the motion is correct?
It is correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion carries. There is no need for item 7.5, so we will move on to eight. New business, action requested, adoption of continuing resolution. Mrs. Gregory.
Yes. I'll call Dr. Harry Miley, Senior Chief for Finance and Operations, to the podium to discuss the adoption of the continuing resolution. Dr. Miley.
Good evening, everyone. We discussed this continuing resolution last board meeting. This was in case the state legislature did not adopt a budget by the time we needed it in June 30. We understand that this, the Senate and Finance, the two committees met last week and approved the conference committees. However, the Senate and House are coming back tomorrow to approve those, so we're hoping that this is not needed, but I recommend that we go, that you adopt it because it immediately dissolves once the state acts. But just in case something happens tomorrow, I think this would be prudent to have this passed, but that's my recommendation.
Any, Dr. Miley, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Nash.
I move that we adopt the continuing resolution for the general fund operation budget for the 2023-2024 school year based on the operating budget from 2022.
Second. The motion has been made by Mrs. continuing resolution for the general fund operating budget for the 2023-2024 school year based on operating budget from the 2022-2023 school year. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Board members, please vote. And the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, new business, no action requested, nine board member conduct. Mrs. Gregory.
I think that is Mrs. Washington at this point.
Mrs. Washington.
Mrs. Washington.
Based on the IG recommendations, and the committee would like to bring before the board a revision of the policy of Board BC to address board conduct. I do want to let the board know here, it was pulled from a variety of districts across the state, just to kind of give us a foundation. Again, yes, while some of the wording may be subjective, as it was stated earlier, this is just a start for us to look at areas to address, so that we have a policy that's updated and that addresses what was in the report. Again, also, as we stated earlier, thinking about some of the most recent comments that came from our surveys, we want to let the public know that this is an area that we are addressing, and moving forward, we have a policy in place for this, so we will open it up for any suggestions. And this is a no-action item. And again, the wording here, this is meant for us to digest it and change as needed as we see fit.
Mrs. Porter.
I'd just like to say, from the committee discussions that we've had in the past, there have been some additions to this policy, and some things that I like that were added, was the statement in the beginning about the board conduct. It's not meant to take away a member's right to free speech as an elected official, or diminish a board member's responsibility to his or her constituents. I like that we put that in the beginning, and that it's to build trust and ensure a conducive environment for governance. So I think that it sets the tone for the, so that you understand why we've put these statements in place. So I like that addition, Ms. Washington.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
And I will say in that paragraph, that section, starting with the building of the trust, again, this is language that was just pulled from other places, just to give us a springboard, but if we would like to remove anything that such, it was, it was brought to my attention, maybe removing the, avoiding embarrassing comments about board members and/or the district, and the refraining from hidden agendas and misforming the board of information. So that is also an area, if that is a concern of the majority of the board, that we can remove those, that wording as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any other board members?
I just have a question. An offending board member and the board chair, vice chair, or other designated individual member, I'm just curious about this. What if the board chair or the board vice chair does not feel comfortable being in the middle of someone's, an adult, an elective official, you know, conversation, then what do we do with that? And I'm not sure who included number one, but if someone can explain that.
So, this is in my opinion.
Okay.
If we're going to take on a position as a board leader, then we should be able to be comfortable having those conversations with people. That, again, that's just my opinion for leadership. And then, again, if this is something that we need to go in and look at, the language of you.
And I would love to look at the language of that because I can speak for myself, I'm very outspoken, but we do have people that may not feel comfortable being placed in that type of situation. And I don't want someone, whether they're in a leadership role or not, to have to be placed in an uncomfortable situation dealing with adult behavior. I think that's something where, if a board member has an issue with another board member, hopefully, if we're talking about board and superintendent conduct, that we're professional enough and we're cordial enough that we can call that person up, and hopefully, we can build that relationship where we do feel comfortable calling that person and saying, "You offended me," and then working it out. But I think bringing other people in, and then too, with this policy, we are all elective officials, so we cannot police each other. That's not what we're here for. We're kind, we're respectful. I get that, but once again, constituents voted us to this position, and I don't want my colleagues policing me because I'm not going to police them. So I think to soften this up, we probably need to come with a different language, and that's just my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I will say that I do feel that the number one, or something thereof, does need to be in place, because the first step in solving a problem is probably having a conversation. And I believe that having that third party there is probably there to be a mediator, and based on the IG report, in, in hopes of not having a repeat, and solve problems by themselves. And so, we want to make sure that certain situations don't repeat themselves, and, and having something in place where there's a mediator, and if, if, I think if we have an issue with a suggestion, maybe offering another suggestion of something that could replace it would be a great idea as well.
Can I add something to that? I, I truly understand what you're saying.
Okay.
And I think we do probably need to reword that, because what if the third person is not adult-like to help resolve the issue? Now you have more people and a bigger issue.
Yeah.
You know? So I do agree, and maybe we should change that to agreed-upon mediator, that the two people agree to bring in a mutual...
That's a great idea.
Yes, I, I agree. Any other discussion? I, oh, Mrs. McFadden.
So I'll take this opportunity to address the elephant in the room. I believe that if, when it comes to board conduct, if we're able to speak to each other kindly, respect each other, and think about what we're saying to each other and how we speak to each other, and if you see someone that is being disrespectful to someone else, that you speak in a kind manner, and don't let it progress constantly. As we saw, Mr. Philpott pointed out, if we watch the first few minutes of this board meeting, then we all know that, like he said, you know, are we operating under this? And I'm guilty, you know, of not behaving in a certain manner that I should, and we all know that. However, we need to move, like, to change. However, you know, going back and forth and snarky comments and things like that, that really does have to stop because... really does have to stop because it does lead to bigger explosive issues if they're not addressed early on. So, dealing with this policy now and actually having conversation about it and not being snarky toward each other whenever we're saying our point or our view, not just about this policy, but other policies and other things that we want to get on the board or on the agenda, if we all are just kinder, like Mr. Phil Pot said, I think it would stop a lot of situations from getting to where they were about this time last year.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. So, I'll go ahead and speak now. And I do believe that, you know, this was written with good intentions. My request was to have more of a workshop discussion so that the board could issue that really needs to be addressed. And again, agree with Mr. Phil Pot and his comments. But as we're talking about initially, the IG, while board conduct was talked about or different incidents or happenings of board members, the IG gave us a list of policies to look at and review. Policy BC was not one. When I'm looking at this policy, my first question is, based upon the first line, when we're talking about not to restrict freedom of speech of an elected official, well, we shouldn't, nobody should have the freedom of speech, was there legal review? Because we're talking about avoid, in the second paragraph, avoiding embarrassing comments about board members and/or district. And sometimes, comments are going to be embarrassing when somebody is speaking the truth. So, I have a concern with that line, but bringing this to the board.
We'll be more than happy to sit down with our attorney to do that so that we can make sure that this information is reviewed. But again, although it wasn't a policy that was specifically addressed, that was required, in speaking and talking and looking over, board conduct was violated many times in that report. And so, again, this was the reason that the committee decided to bring it forth. Just for the sake of time, and I know that it was one of your recommendations, would you prefer for us to go ahead and table this so that we can have an in-depth discussion?
That was my initial request, was so that we could just have a very casual, comfortable conversation about what we want to see added or taken away from the original, to be added when we have a workshop in August.
Is it possible for us to go ahead and submit our suggestions over to administration so that they can kind of include those different things in? And that way, we have a hard copy that will be uploaded so that we all can see the suggestions that everyone has during that time?
You know, I might defer to Dr. Franklin to tell us what might be the best way. I'm not opposed to it, but I would like, or seek guidance from her in terms of, you know, what she thinks would be best on how we address this policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. My suggestion would be what Ms. Washington suggested, is to have board members submit their suggestions. And because the recommended changes came from the committee, maybe have the committee then take those suggestions and revisit the draft proposal.
Okay. Would there, Mrs. Washington, would there be a timeline then when you would like for that to the board, to submit this information to you?
I can send it in an email.
Okay, that would be terrific. Mrs. Nash, I'm sorry, did you say?
Can I just add one question to Mrs. Washington? When is the next date for the IG committee meeting?
We're not going to meet again until after the hiring of a new superintendent so that we can include them in the conversation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mrs. Nash, did you have something?
Did.
Okay, Mrs. Nash.
I just wanted to say, I think that at the very beginning of this meeting, I personally feel that it was healthy. And what people don't realize is when we went back here, we all had great conversation and we laughed. But there are some things that are maybe tense for some people, but I don't think that there was, the tone and treatment has completely shifted from when you first saw us here as new board members, getting used to what was and what is. I am happy that you guys did come up with a policy because I think everybody needs a guide. And that's one of the things that I feel that are great, is a great thing about leadership, is that you come up with a guide. What are the characteristics that we're going to stand by and remind each other of? So, at the beginning of this meeting, I'm just, I would just want to say that I thought that that was all handled very well. And afterwards, we all went back there, ate, and got the job done and got out of our executive session in 24 minutes early than we normally do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Any further discussion?
I do have one additional question. So, at that first meeting, because we do know that during the workshops, that we can actually have a first reading, how can we make sure that that happens during that workshop time? So that we don't have to wait for another two or three meetings to have this, you know, approved back September, October?
Well, actually, a motion could be made to have that put on the agenda.
No, the first reading can be done at a workshop instead of at a board meeting. So, how can we make sure that?
Just have, make the motion to have the first reading, you know, when we get to the point of having that. But there'll be a new board chair. You can have the conversation with the new board chair. Again, if we've got three people, and I'll be one of those to support and send in an email to the new board chair, then it goes on the agenda.
Got it.
Okay? All right, thank you so much. Item 9.2, policy revision, policy GCQE-GDQC, retirement professional and support staff. Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Ms. Agostini. Ms. Sean Williams, Senior HR Chief, will present the policy revision for policy GCQE-GDQC on retirement of professional and support staff.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Mrs. Gregory. In mid-April, you'll recall receiving notification of revisions of model policies regarding employee retirement from the School Board Association. Policy GCQE-GDQC, retirement of professional and support staff. The policy presented to you tonight is a draft revision to our employee retirement policy that aligns with South Carolina state law and the retirement eligibility and employment. The information that is underlined is the information that has been added to the policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Board members, any questions? No questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 9.3, budget discussion. This was added to the agenda. We had a colleague ask for just a general discussion about different issues and not so structured. Mrs. McFadden left. So, but, you know, one of the things that I had a question for when we got our priorities in the last time, that I would like to hear from Dr. Miley and get the board comments on, as we've just talked about, the IG report, and that prohibit us from getting our audit information in on time. And part of the concern with that was the software that they knew, or that they were using in the finance department is sort of antiquated. One of my suggestions or recommendations, or was looking for thoughts from the board, was replacing that software so it was more universal and it wasn't so hard to find people trained on it. So, that was a thought, an idea. How much will it cost? Is it something we could afford? Is it something that the board is interested in and making it as a priority?
Thank you. Good evening again. We have looked into this, and when I spoke about this software system, I certainly didn't mean to imply that it was to blame. We know that I was responsible for that. So, it was a part of the perfect storm that came through the district at the time. The district implemented this software system in 2008 and '09. It was, it was, it was an Alio system, and it was, that system has since been bought by a company called Link. We agree that it's been here for 10 years. We have been using it. It is functional. We've had some improvements made. Link is now actually moving towards a cloud-based system. What we do think is that it does need to be reviewed and reviewed by a team from IT, HR, finance, and others that actually use the system and others that are dependent on the system, for us to come back and recommend whether we should go forward with a new system or not. We think that that review would probably take about six to nine months. We currently have a three-year, we still have three years on our contract with Link. We signed onto that contract to save substantial amounts of fees per annual, so that three-year contract made a whole lot of fiscal sense, and we have been making some improvements. Conversion to a new system is a lengthy, complicated process, and we estimate that it would probably take two years minimum. We don't know exactly. Again, that's what we think we should study, and it would, it could cost perhaps as much as a million dollars. The system that we implemented in 2008 and '09 was over a half a million dollars. That was 10 years ago. So, a new system and implementing it could cost as much as a million dollars. But again, we think that that's appropriate. We think that we have made improvements. Link has made improvements to the system. But it's still, one of the unique things is that when we are interviewing and bringing people onto this, into our district, it is usually a unique system because a lot of the other districts use other vendors. I think right now, we are going to be implementing, again, based on the IG's report, we're implementing a time and attendance system throughout the district. That's a task of itself, and so, we would want to make that implemented fully before we undertake a new software system. And then, we would want to make sure that any new software system was compatible with that. Every system probably has its strengths and weaknesses, and we would want to make sure that we're not getting rid of our old weaknesses and gaining some new weaknesses. Like I said, it would take about a million dollars. In January, Link assisted us in implementing a new improvement program. Our team is meeting weekly to implement and improve the system. We think those improvements will help us in the future. In terms of addressing the IG's and the fiscal watch issue about our audit, we've already begun that process. We have the auditor coming in next Monday. We're addressing that. The response that we gave to the State Department was accepted, and we got that notice just this past week in terms of they approved our process, and we're, we've already begun implementing that process. So, we would be happy to answer any other questions. Again, that we agree, we need to look at a new system. Perhaps we could have looked at this years ago, but the system has adopted, has provided us the need for, I mean, has provided our needs and has worked. It is just unique to our district in terms of other districts in the state. I've asked Ms. Williams to be here. She's familiar with other districts in the state and be happy to answer any other questions.
So, we're committed to this for a couple more years, but we have been actively since January, working to address the concerns and issues that created our circumstances. Is that correct?
Well, they're not only created the circumstances, but they have, they needed to be improved, period.
Okay, all right. So, it's being addressed?
Correct. We think one of the things that we need to self-improve on is our ability to train our own people, and that system is being addressed as well, as well for onboarding new people, getting them up to speed. If that system was, is perhaps more efficient, it would make new people coming to the district more efficient, quicker.
Dr. Scott?
Thank you, Dr. Miley, for sharing that. Just a few questions. The first one is, you mentioned that we have a three, three years left on the contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that we could get out of the contract sooner? And if so, is there a cost to that?
There, we may be able to. We're looking into that cost. We looked into that cost today. We haven't found the correct answer yet. We, I'm not sure if that is known by Mr. Carter or not, but our, Ms. Robinson Lee, our procurement officer, was looking into that. She was occupied by a couple of other things today and is still implementing and working on the implementation and the training manual for the new procurement system. So, we will get that answer to you.
Okay. And the second question, if we considered that because the cost is low enough for us to move forward, where would the $1 million come from? What line item?
That's a very good question. That's a very good question. It would need to be, some of it might be from capital funds because some of it might be equipment and software. A lot of it may be implementation costs, the cost of having them come in and training everybody. But that's part of what we recommend would be a prudent plan to come back to you and say, "Yes, we need to do this. Here's our timeline. Here's the cost and where the funding will come from."
And my last question, you almost touched on it. I was going to say, what is the timeline for training? Will there be like a training cycle of different employees? And what is the timeline of that?
Yes, ma'am. And again, that's not my expertise, but that's what we think this vetting, this six-to-nine month process, because we want IT in the room to help us know what we're getting and help us understand the training. We need HR in the room to make sure that we're satisfying their needs, and the same thing with finance and any other department that touches that program, make sure that we're addressing their needs and can address their needs in any system that we think is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Porter?
Thank you, Dr. Miley. So, I had two questions. You said it was two years to convert. What do you mean by that, it being two years to convert to an equivalent?
And again, I'm not a software expert. But one of the problems is, okay, we're talking about a comprehensive system, software system, that pays our employees, onboards our personnel, handles all accounts payable, and very complicated process.
Right.
We purchased that process, we purchased the new software. It might take us six months or longer to have everybody trained and that system loaded with all the information. We can't stop the old systems. We have to have both teams, we have to have all of our people trained on both systems and both systems working perfectly, vetted, and tested before we ever said, "Okay, we're going to rely on the new system." And that would take some time.
Okay.
And I don't know whether it would take a year or 12 months, I mean, three or 12 months. I think they're the same. A year or 18 months or 24 months, but it would take a substantial amount of time, and it's not something that you would do quickly.
Okay. So, I was thinking, having three years left on the contract might be perfect because it would be two years to convert. All right. And then, my second question was, is the time and attendance system, is it normally associated with our competitors that we would look into?
There are several systems that have time, several time and attendance systems out there, vendors providing that system. Making it sure that it's compatible with the other financial and HR systems is important. I believe our system is compatible with the time and attendance program that we're planning to implement for district-wide. It is currently compatible with our Alio-Link system, the current time and attendance program that we have, but it's for a relatively small population of our total 4,000 employees. But we would have to make sure, that's part of that very complicated, way over my head implementation system that would need to be tested and perfect. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And you answered my questions or, you know, addressed my issues or concerns that they're being looked at in the timeframe. So, I think that's something that we can look at down the road, but not a priority for this year.
I agree. It is, may still be a priority, but it can't be accomplished this year, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you for that.
It can be started.
Board members, are there any other questions that board members have regarding the budget? So, the only other issue that I'd like to bring up or concern, we talked about the travel budget for the board, and we had a board member $10,000. My, I'd like to come to some type of consensus currently so that the public knows, we have a travel training budget of $7,000. As we saw last year, there were several members that spent or, you know, exceeded their budget. But with that in mind, the travel that we normally did, like the airline flight to go out to the West Coast for the National School Boards Association, went from $500 to $1,200, you know, just in a matter of weeks. And when we were canceled and rebooked, that was, you know, one of the cause of the problems. And we've still seen the airline price, or airline prices and information like that increase. And I will say this, when people are asking, "Why do we need to go to these trainings?" These trainings are instrumental. They are so good for us, the board training that I receive and the information that I've learned and the questions that we can ask and the networking and the resourcing. So, it had been asked for $10,000. I'm going a little bit excessive. I would rather see, you know, in between of $8,500. I'm looking for board members to share their thoughts on where they'd like to see the travel budget go for the board expenses. Mrs. Porter?
I remember us reviewing the budget, and what I recall is, Dr. Miley did not see where we had an issue with our, that line item. It wasn't being stressed or enough of an issue for us to address it at that point in time. And I don't remember seeing where we were coming. And I, I don't remember seeing where we were coming that close. And I know when I look at mine, I don't see it coming that close to where it was an issue.
This is completely a decision by the board. I will say that that change, if that's, is what the board would like to do. If the will of the board is to do that, that our budget, the board's budget that we have allocated, and we're actually going to suggest that we actually increase that budget slightly.
I would think that our, we would need to go over the budget a couple of times before we would make such a change. And I don't see where that is happening.
We, we would prefer not to go over budget things. But, but again, that's, we, we think that the budget can be adjusted to accommodate the wishes of the board there.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Nash? The question I had was, I know that we had talked about before, like if there is, like say, I'm probably going to be a person that is going to try to stay around state just because of the nature of my job outside of. But, that being said, I'm probably going to spend less than someone who does have, like I'm probably going to have money left over. Is that, can we have that rolled over for, you know, the next year?
We can't have it roll over to the next year. But I believe the board policy allows a board member who has not spent the full allocation to use, for another board member to use some of that allocation. I don't have the board policy in front of me, but I've begged.
That is correct.
So, in terms of carrying over the budget to the next budget year, no. In terms of using that fund, using those funds that aren't going to be used by one board member for another board member, that's, I believe, is, is, you said.
I have one more question. So, if it, if it just sits there in the budget, what happens to it?
It goes to, just like anything else that we have, this unspent at the end of the year, it goes towards the fund balance.
Do you roll this money over? And I, I'm thinking, if it's general fund money, why can't it still be connected to that, that board member? Why does it have to leave and then go back to the general fund to be used other places? And I am one that really support the increase. I'm retired and I'm a lifelong learner. So, I enjoy workshops. I enjoy conferences. I enjoy going. Mrs. Agostini? And then, my flexibility, I can do that. I'm not tied to a building or a company where I can't, you know, enjoy that. So, my, my question with that is, I don't want, if you can't go, that you stifle the board. If you go to two national conferences, that's going to cost you almost $7,000 once you look at your flight and the cost of the conferences and things like that. Now, we can scale back. And I'm truly, you know, for that if it has to be. But I don't want to do that for future board members and other people, because I don't plan to be here for a career. This is not my career. But I don't like making policies or locking someone in just because it fits my needs. I think we have to look beyond that. And that's what got us to the $7,000, because originally, when we got on the board, we had a pot of money that was, use that money and go. And I don't think anyone abused that. But again, I am okay with that. If we want to move to $8,500, I am okay with that. Or if we choose to remain at $10,000. I have Level 6. I've worked hard. I've been to conferences. I'm learning. I'm still going to learn. And any conference that I do want to attend, whether I have the money or not, I can pay for it. So, I'm okay either way. But I don't want to lock in board members who may not have that luxury of being able to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I'm going to ask a, it's sort of a basic question, just from listening to my colleagues. If you can explain why money doesn't roll over. It's, it's all of the general fund. No, after June 30th, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we're done. Then with a government entity, you start July 1st with the new and everything that was left over.
That's what we try to do.
So, that's why, it's not that something that we want to do. That's what we have to do.
We don't do it with just the board's budget. We do it with all expenditures in the district and all departments.
But we're required by law to do that?
I'm can't, I'm not a lawyer, but it's good budgeting and that we have been practicing and we think we should continue to practice.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
Dr. Miley, I remember last year or so, we talked about being able to earmark funds before they rolled into the general fund. And we never did really get to actually do that. But I was told by Ms. Shelley Allen that at some point during the budget cycle, that we would be able to earmark funds so that they wouldn't go into the general fund and that we would be able to, in department or what have you. We had a lengthy discussion about this. I'm wondering at what point, if this would be something that these funds that are going to be, roll over into general fund from every single department that we talked about before, if they can be earmarked? And when can they be earmarked?
I'm not sure I know everything that Shelley said there. What I thought she was talking about is if we saw in March that, that a department wasn't going to spend all of their professional development funding, that we could use some of that department's professional development funding by another department. But in terms of earmarking it and not rolling it over and keeping it till the next fiscal year, I don't think that's what Shelley said, but I'm, but I'm not sure.
I believe it is, because we had that discussion at length last year. And I'll even remember stating that someone let me know when it was time to earmark those funds. The time came to earmark those funds and it was not on the agenda. And it was bypassed. And the next thing I heard, it was June 30th and the budget was passed.
May I ask, answer back to you next week?
Yeah, that would be great, because I think we.
Mrs. Porter, thank you.
Is it possible where if a board member has gone over or about to go over and another board member has ample or extra funds, will you at least notify them so that they can share their extra funds to the other board member?
We are trying to monitor that and notify you. One of the, one of the problems there is, for instance, we usually try to track expenditures. But some of the time, someone has committed something in advance. And that might put them over, but they haven't been spent money, they haven't spent over the $7,000 yet. And so, they end up going to the conference. And then, they, that is difficult to track.
But it starts over at what time? When does the $7,000 start over?
July 1.
Okay.
So, but we are tracking the expenditures by board member. We actually implemented accounting, account numbers so that we could track board members easier and board members' expenditures easier. So, we are tracking that and we are trying to keep you up to date on those expenditures.
Madam Chair? Mrs. Nash?
I, I do think that in light of inflation, that especially for people who do want to travel, that we should, I think you said at the beginning, take that into consideration, because that's not going down and it's going to continue to go up. And by the time, you know, we're, we're down a year down the road, we're still going to be behind on the pricing is.
And I absolutely agree with that. And get consensus on whether we want it to be $7,000, $8,500, $10,000. And then, it can be written into the budget. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, we would vote on it when the budget comes to us?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be the real vote. So, can we get some general consensus of, would anybody like for it to stay at $7,000? Mr. Trapp?
I would like for it to stay at $7,000.
Okay. Who would like for it to go to $8,500? Can we see a show of hands, is there? I'm sorry? No, this is, well, this is just trying to build consensus, okay? We can, because the vote is actually.
Is there any way that you can?
The actual vote on this won't take place until we do. We're just, he's trying to get an idea of where to go, what direction to take.
I don't know, so if there's a way that you can do that, is that possible?
Okay, that's a great idea. Recommendation?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on what it was, say, 2020 or 2019 before prices.
We certainly can do that.
If, if that would be great, because that gives us more insight.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the budget, the upcoming budget? We'll have the second reading at our next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 10, 10.1, draft agenda items for June 27, 2023. Mrs. Gregory?
Yes, for June 27th, we will have our call to order executive session at 5:30. Approval of the agenda for executive session. Well, to add, student appeals, breach of contracts, employment rate. Note that we have a public hearing, which is required as part of the budget process. A public hearing on the 2324 general fund budget, which will open at 6:30 or will open our meeting. Our inspirational moment, pledge of allegiance, and the consent agenda with the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Classified employment releases and industry transfers, capital improvement updates. We'll have our first public participation session and then the voting on executive session items. Under new business action requested, we'll come back to policy G C Q U E, G D Q C, retirement of professional support staff that Ms. Williams shared tonight. It will be the second reading approval for district budget. For 9/3, we have right now a bond resolution placeholder. But actually, that should be reworded to read bond referendum funding update. And that's following our small sessions that we have with Ms. Heiser earlier. Again, bond referendum funding update that Dr. Miley will share. Under our new business, no action requested. We look forward to the announcement of our new superintendent and a progress report on the SIG recommendations. Agenda items for the next meeting. Second public participation if needed. Executive session, again, continued if needed. Voting on those items. And then, lastly, we will have the election of board officers. Hard to believe it's time for that and end with our board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Any comments or things, items that board members would wish to have added to the agenda?
I have a question.
Mrs. Washington?
Is this the 10.2, item 10.2, the recommendations? Is this progress report coming from administration? Are you asking the committee to present this information?
As far as I know, this is the committee. And if we do not need it, we can remove it. Because you were just saying earlier, in fact, that you were going to wait till the new superintendent, not till August. So, we don't need that item. We can remove it.
Yes, please.
Dr. Franklin, correct me if, if I'm wrong on this.
So, that item will be removed?
I'm taking it off.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any other questions, comments?
Madam Chair? It's now the time to make requests for things to be put on the agenda for a future meeting?
Sure. Or if you don't want it for the next meeting, perhaps you'd like to wait until you get the new board chair and the new superintendent to have it put on. But if you want it put on the next meeting or a future meeting?
I do. I would like it to go on the, I just want to go on record that I would like it to go on the August 3rd meeting, the board retreat, policies ACB, policy JB, policies JJAB, and policy JI.
Ms. McFadden, would you repeat those policies again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Policy ACB, policy JB, policy JJAB, and policy JI.
So, would you like to make a motion? Or are you just putting it on the record that you want those to go on?
I'm putting it on record.
Okay. All right. So, thank you.
And that's the second request.
Okay. So, moving on then to item 11, public part. Yes, Mrs. Washington?
So, just to clarify, a clarifying question. Those are policies that we're going to be addressing at the board retreat?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to have those pulled and for us to sit down as a board to have a discussion on those. Those do include policies about the gender bathroom and other gender-specific information that was quoted to us from administration concerning gender roles in our students.
So, my other question for Madam Chair is, are we going to spend that workshop or that retreat going over policies? Or are we going to be able to have another? I'm trying not to have our agendas filled with policies. But there are a couple of policies that I would like for us to address regarding student behavior and use of electronics. We have seen data showing the, the number of fights, the appeals with fights. And I really think that we need to look at that policy, because it has become a safety issue. And so, I, I guess, I'm not going to make a motion for us to put this on the next agenda. But I would like for this to be addressed as soon as we can to make sure that before our students and our staff get back in school, that they understand the severity of this policy and the direction that we're heading, so that our schools can be safe and secure at all times.
And I appreciate, and I'll get to Mrs. Porter in just a minute. But in terms or in regard to the August board retreat, I will no longer be board chair. So, it will be up to the board chair, that chair, to work with the superintendent to coordinate the agenda. So, that will not be my responsibility. So, that would be the question for the new chair. Mrs. Porter?
While Ms. Washington didn't want to put that on that agenda, if we're going to talk about policies at that board retreat, I personally would rather talk about discipline early on in the school year, just because we were flooded this year with that topic and with teacher retention and with the issues that we had with discipline. If we're going to talk about policies at that retreat and the timing of it, I would like to talk about the discipline matrix that we have and, and how that affects these policies. I think these would be a priority with the timing. And that would be policy J I C J with electronic devices and communication. And then, J I C D A, code of conduct for our students. Oh, nope. Sorry.
You know, and again, and I, I'm not meaning to interrupt, but these are things that will need to be, after we elect the new board chair, June 27th, and we're talking about the board retreat, whoever's elected, that would be the opportunity for all of the board members to have conversations with the new board chair to tell them, you know, what information you would like to. If we're going to do policies, I think we do need to do policies and have a nice workshop with that. But get all these policies in there and the workshop. Does that sound fine to everybody? Okay. Moving on, is, are we, we're all okay? Public participation, 11, we do not have additional people signed up. Item 12, executive session, we do not need a second one. We don't need item 13, voting on executive session items. So, we're moving to item 14, board and superintendent comments. I will start with Mrs. Porter.
I just want to thank our team from Center for Inquiry for their inspirational moment. And also, wanted to just say thank you again for everything that was done to close out the school year for our staff and our students. I thought everything was beautiful. The graduation ceremonies left me so full. Each and every ceremony had its own personal touch. And I got to see each school reflected in each ceremony. It was absolutely amazing. So, thank you for all the staff. I know everyone played a different part in it to make all of those moments special. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Washington?
I just want to say thank you to our community for just another successful school year. And always, congratulations to all of our students that have been promoted across the district as well as to our high school graduates. I really enjoyed the high school graduation ceremonies. And I want to thank every person that was involved in that, from the school level to the district level, making just each ceremony something that was very memorable. I had a great time laughing with our chief staff members that were there. Carla was putting together, I think it was some kind of, we were trying to have a contest of who could put together the, the best, I can't think of what it was, the rap. And Nikki Porter had to show us how to do the rap the right way. But moments like those really remind me of the importance of us building and forging great relationships for better student outcomes. And speaking of the staff, I want to thank Greg and his team for creating a nice visual that actually lists out our administration and what they've completed regarding the IG report. 70% of those items that were listed have been completed. So, I wanted to make. So I wanted to make that known because we get lots of questions, and we've heard lots of comments about the IG report. That information is public. It is online, and it is listed under the committees on the board webpage. Want to wish our superintendent, she celebrated a happy birthday last week, and our vice chair celebrating a birthday this week as well. Happy birthday. And finally, this Saturday at Spring Valley High School is a walkout for Project Jasmine. In honor of Jasmine Gant, she's a Spring Valley High School graduate who was a victim of gun violence last June. Come out and support this cause so that we can learn ways to combat domestic violence and gun violence in our community. With that being said, God bless you, Richland, too, and thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mr. Trapp.
Yeah, I just want to take, take a couple of minutes and share a few experiences I've had over the last couple of months. First off, I went to the You're a Good Man Charlie Brown play at Blackwood High School, and I just want to congratulate all those that were in the play. It was, I actually enjoyed it. It was great, and I really wish that I was talented enough to stand in front of people and say things I could remember, but I'm not. So I really admire people that can. And those kids really deserve a, a great round of applause at the time, not now. Anyway, I'd also like to give special recognition to Ms. Bowles at Bethel Handberry. She helped organize a joy walk, an opportunity to come together one Saturday morning. They give us ribbons, and as we circled the school, you pull one off, and it was positive messages. It was absolutely great, and I've heard nothing but great things about her, and I want to congratulate her for doing a great job and thank her for the job she does there at Bethel Handberry. Also, graduations last week. All the graduates that walked across the stage, you probably saw me grinning like something was wrong with me, but I just could not help but share in your enthusiasm. And I just, I found myself laughing. I just, it was just, it was wonderful. Even the ones that looked really grumpy, they still, they still were just, it was great to be there with them. And, because I remember being grumpy as a teenager, so I appreciate that. And the last thing I'd like to do is I sincerely want to thank all of, all of you that came out tonight in public participation. I appreciate you taking time out of your life and coming out and sharing your thoughts with us. And I want you to know I share some of your views, all of your views. I appreciate you coming out. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. McFadden.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who works in this district. Another successful school year for 2022, 23. I would like to say a special shout out to my special graduate, my oldest son, Justice Isaiah McFadden, graduated this year, so I was really happy about that, and to all the other graduates. However, I don't want to forget to mention a young man that passed away, Cyrus Carmack Belton. He will not get to see graduation. So I will be attending a vigil with Ms. Washington in honor of him and others that have not made it to graduation. So we've got a lot of things going on, and we want to make sure that we remember these young people, do them safe so that they can make it as well.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Nash.
Well, first, I want to say thank you to CFI for coming out for the inspirational moment. I think one of the things that they said was really, really great, and it was talking about trust. And I think part of having trust means also that sometimes you have to trust each other that you can disagree and be okay. So sometimes you may see us be able to express how we feel about certain things, but at the same time, like I tell you, we had cupcakes back there. So I just want you all to know, we're fine. But I also want to say graduation was phenomenal, and at first, I thought maybe I could be in the Guinness Book of World Workers for shaking those hands, but then you guys were all there, so we would have had a tie. But anyway, also to Greg and your team for all the visuals. They were absolutely stunning, and it was so great to see to all of the students, to all of the staff. We got, like they said, we got a chance to cut up and, you know, sit back there, and our resident tortilla judge here gave us, I got an F, so I will have to improve for next year. But we had a great time just being with one another and being able to celebrate all of the accomplishments of Richland, too. So I want to say thank you to all of, all of, everybody, just thank you so much. And also, I want to say thank you to all my board members and just commend you guys. We sounded out in a rough, rough sea, and I just want to say, I'm, I really do think that you all have done really, really well, and I appreciate every single one of you. We don't always have to agree, but I just want to say that I believe that we're all well-meaning people and passionate people, and so thank you for all that you have done this year. We actually did accomplish some things, and if you dig through some of the fog, there were a lot of great things that were accomplished, and we couldn't have done it without the staff and administration as well. So then lastly, but not least, I want to say happy birthday. I won't start singing, but I will send you a voice note, Dr. Scott and interim superintendent Nancy Gregory, happy birthday to you both. I wish you, wish you many, many more, and God bless you all. And thank you to all of our participants. I love seeing young people come up, stay a part of the process. I think it's wonderful what you do, and you don't have to join Toastmasters. This is free. So tell your friends. All right, maybe don't tell all of them, but thank you guys so much. Hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Dr. Scott.
Yes, I want to first start with keep your prayers lifted for Cyrus, and she's also also sorority sister, some of us who are members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So please keep that family lifted as they go through this horrible time and give them strength and comfort, and send words of encouragement to them if you can. And also, I want to send prayers to a former board member, Mrs. Melinda Anderson, who lost her grandson. So keep her lifted in prayer as well. Now on more exciting news, and I'm glad that she's in here, we're always so excited when our teachers and administrators get awards and get promotions and get things like that. But we have SROs. We have great SROs who we need to shout out and, and congratulate them and put them in the spotlight. I know Master Deputy Tim Ford is not with us today. I think he's on vacation. Master Deputy Shakira Gaston, let's give her a round of applause. She was promoted with Richland County Sheriff Department. And I always like to brag, always tell everyone that we have the best SROs who come and support us at our school board meetings. So thank you, guys, for all that you do. We really, truly appreciate you. We don't say it as much, but we do want you to know that we do appreciate your presence and your support. And then finally, I want to say the summer meals are going well. I've had an opportunity to go to some of the schools and to help serve and to help do things. The great thing about it is, you know, I changed my appearance a little bit, if you notice. I've grown a little hair. So some of them don't know who I am. They don't know who I am. So I can sneak in and help and do things, and I can sneak on out so I don't get the attention on me, but on the parents and the going, helping serve some of those meals. And I look forward to doing that. Now, this is my birthday week, so I'm not going back this week. But I do plan to go back next week and the following week. So I look forward to visiting some of the schools and just getting in the, getting boots back on the ground with the schools helping with the meals. So I'm very excited about that. And again, for all of you all that spoke, doing public participation, thank you so very much. I know it's difficult to do that, but we hear you. We hear you, and thank you, and your voice is loud and it matters. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. Gregory.
Good evening. I want to also say how wonderful our graduations were, and congratulations to our recent graduates. Close to 2,000 high school graduates received 168,756,000. That's a lot to be proud of. Also, I want to applaud our communications team. If you didn't see all the great tweets that they put out, the stories behind the students and their families at graduations. There were some really heartfelt, very moving stories. So thank you for sharing those with our community. Our summer's off to a great start. We launched summer reading camp in Elementary SOAR on Monday. Teachers have kicked off summer professional learning last week with Avid and Orton-Gillingham Training, and we're busy preparing for 2023, 24, as teachers are set to return shortly on August the 1st. So enjoy the summer that you have, rest, have some time with your family and friends. But again, we have a very short summer, and teachers will be back very shortly.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. Echo and repeat what my colleagues have said, my favorite part of the meeting our community have to say. And I just want to thank you all so much for coming out tonight to speak and address the board and administration at Richland, too. Also, I want to congratulate all of our graduates and our students promoted and say thank you to all of those schools who welcomed me into their schools and their celebrations. I think I visited maybe one to like 12 or 13 graduations and promotion ceremonies. So it was a lot of fun to see how the schools do it differently and, you know, the excitement, the nervousness, and all the different emotions that our students displayed while we were celebrating them. And then just as my final note tonight. I told you I wasn't going to be able to do this without. I want to say thank you to Shirley Vickery. She's retiring. She knows what she means to me and what she did for one of my children. But the thing is, she doesn't do it just for my kid, and this was before I was on school board. This is what her job is and how she makes a difference in so many students' lives. So I wish you a happy retirement, and thank you very much. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Madam Chair?
Mrs. Porter.
So the motion was made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott to adjourn the meeting. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Board members, please vote. Oh, oh, Doc, oh, we're doing a hand vote. I thought you were pointing like there's discussion. Okay, so yeah, they were all just voting by the hand. Okay, all those in favor? We got our hands up. All those opposed? So the vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great night.